Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, November 28th, 2023, meeting of the Norwood Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being held at the Harry Butters Selectmen's Chambers at the Norwood Town Hall in broadcast and hybrid format by NCM. As always, we will begin the evening with Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, it's great to see everyone after a Thanksgiving break, after town meeting, a successful town meeting. So I'm happy to be here and we'll get started. Agenda item number one, warrant signature update, submitting notification of reviewed and approved warrant report signed by the board's representative. Do we have a motion to? Motion to table? File, yes, motion to file made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All those in favor? Chair votes a unanimous. Item number two, meeting minutes for approval of the board submitting meeting minutes for November 13th, 2023 and November 14th, 2023. And these are updated versions, correct? Yes. Great, thank you. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to file.
Motion to file made by Mr.
To approve.
Motion. We had a, we had a little break, we had a break. Motion approved made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Ms. Plasko. All those in favor? Chair votes a unanimous. We can start our appointment now.
Sure.
Great. Okay, so we do have one appointment this evening. Carrie McCarthy from the Norwood Senior Center is presenting information on age-friendly communities and seeking the board's support for dementia-friendly initiatives. Thank you so much for being here. That's great to see you. The floor is yours.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Lee and members of the board. I have something to ask you as our town leaders to sign the dementia-friendly community pledge. In a dementia-friendly community, individuals, businesses, local government, the library, and others commit to increase their dementia awareness, reducing the stigma, offering an environment and programs to better support people with mental loss and their care partners. Close to 200 communities in Massachusetts have already taken the pledge that I'm asking you to take this evening. Being a dementia-friendly community means that a community is inclusive, allowing residents with dementia to thrive as active, contributing members of society. In addition, recognizing the needs of adults living with dementia and supporting those individuals and their caretakers. In the 2018 Massachusetts Healthy Aging Community Profile, Norwood was estimated as having little over 16% of people living with Alzheimer's or related dementia. That is higher than the state average. And Norwood currently has over 8,000 residents over the age of 60. So I'm sure that number has increased in the last few years. Dementia-friendly communities provide programs, services, and a welcoming environment for older adults that can support this initiative each in place. Older adults can take comfort in knowing that, should they experience dementia, they can still engage in activities, events, contribute to the local economy, and be respected by community members. With so many of our neighbors experiencing this disease, there's only right to consider this kind of support. In 2019, a few months before the pandemic, Norwood was designated as an age-friendly community. The community needs assessment was done by the Center for Social and Demographic Research on Aging at the Geritology Institute at UMass. It is highly recommended we take this pledge due to the number of folks and caregivers that not only are dealing with the disease now, but for the many more that will be diagnosed or become a caregiver for a loved one. So you have the pledge in front of you. I'm asking you to sign it. Once you sign it, I have other department heads that are willing to take the pledge as well and community members and caregivers that will help support this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. McCarthy. Thank you for being here. Questions, comments from the board? And yes, Ms. Grow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very excited about this. I've been learning about age-friendly communities for a couple of years. And so I'm excited for us to really push further on that because, as you say, we're higher than the average. And so some of the things I learned about were things such as the nature of how things look in the public space in town, having visible landmarks that are different in different places. Like if you have a neighborhood that's very homogenous and sort of looks very uniform, it's easier to get disoriented and lose track of where you are. You might not be able to get back to your home. Whereas if you have landmarks like, say, the electrical boxes that have the public art project, now each of those electrical boxes looks unique. And so that's like a small, little help, but it's more awareness and finding new ways to help there. So I'm really excited about this.
Oh, thank you. It's just little steps, little steps that make a big difference.
Mr. Sad, you're good?
No, great presentation. Keep up the great job. I'm signing.
Thank you.
Ms. Plasko.
No, I thank you for bringing it forward to us and the information. I guess I just want to elaborate for the public, just one part of the pledge, not read the whole pledge, but basically we are agreeing that every part of our community plays a role and together we can work to take steps to create a dementia-friendly culture, facilitate the adoption of dementia-friendly practices in all parts of Norwood. And as you mentioned, all departments are going to be part of this effort. It's a worthy, worthy effort.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Donnelly.
Thank you, Carrie, for bringing this forward. I certainly support the pledge as well. So once we have supported the pledge, are there program activities or action plans that you will look for us to help you design and support going forward?
Sure, we will actually be doing our age-friendly and dementia-friendly action plan together. The state has said we could combine them. So 2024 will be the year that we get our action plan together. I had a lot of work already done by UMass and I've got some great volunteers that are willing to help with it as well.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie, for being here. I think just this is great and like Mr. Sad said, you know, I'm sure we will sign, support, do whatever you need. Just thinking, Tony, in terms of the master plan committee and incorporating some of these things into that process, I'm sure we'll do that, but.
Active aging will probably be woven into a number of different areas of the plan.
Great.
And we've already started with, for several years now, we've done a variety of different dementia-friendly trainings for staff, particularly frontline staff who may interact with folks suffering from dementia.
That's great. And you had said that numbers-wise, about 16% of the population in Norwood?
Yes, and that was in 2018. And I think we've definitely seen those numbers.
Trending up.
For sure.
Right, so you know, almost probably a fifth of the population, right? We're saying, yeah. So no, this is important. So whatever support you need from the board, you know, we're happy to provide it. Great. Do we have a motion to, do we need to have a motion to sign?
I'll make a motion to support and sign the dementia-friendly initiative pledge that had been presented before us.
Great. Motion to approve and sign made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Ms. Grow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes a unanimous. Do you mind staying for a minute or two?
Just have it original for us to sign.
Perfect, great. While we have you here, we don't have you here all that often. So if you want to use this as a platform to just, just talk about some of the things that are going on at the Senior Center, we won't grill you. I'm sure this is all good stuff, so.
Yeah, it's, it's great. We just got another vehicle. Norwood Light purchased us an all-electric vehicle.
Awesome.
Which is really great. So now we've gone since 2020, we forever, we only had one senior center bus. And now we have the senior center bus and three other transportation vehicles that get people to out-of-town appointments, which is huge. It's really busy every single day.
Especially with no hospital, right?
We have no, right, of course. So we're doing a lot of Needham and Newton. So it's been great. The lunch program has, continues to grow. We really have a great program there and we're, the amount of lunches we're doing a day has exceeded. So that's great. And the activities, we're getting tons of new members. We're offering some evening programs for younger, older adults that are still working. And outreach, everything is going great. We're very fortunate, we have a great center.
Great, excellent. Anything else from the board?
I just want to thank you for the invitation to a Thanksgiving dinner.
Oh, thanks for coming.
It was very good.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks again.
It's another example of how great that program is, the lunch program, that they can cater all our events at such a large scale.
And you have a holiday lunch coming up?
Yep, we have a holiday lunch coming up. We have a gym pack December.
And you were saying, how many people do you get at the holiday lunch?
Well, we're supposed to stop at 175, but it's creeping up to 200.
Wow, that's crazy. Good for you.
We're able to do it, so we live.
Great, excellent. Do you have any questions for us?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Great. Oh, Mr. Mazuka.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just mention, I was going to wait until Carrie left and mention this later, but since she's here, I'll just embarrass her a little bit. Some of the programs that we've, that she's put in place over the last few years, particularly the meal program, we've kept the price the same on that. We don't charge for the senior medical transport program. So we know that inflation is causing a challenge for a lot of families out there, particularly those on a fixed income. And Carrie through her department, they've kept these programs either free or at a low cost. It's a way that we're actually helping seniors on fixed incomes stay in the community and stay in their homes by offering these services either at a low or no cost where we can. And we're always moving money around or getting money or donations where we can to try to keep free programs free and to keep low-cost programs low-cost. And Carrie and her team has done a great job of that, which works on a number of levels. The sense of community, the meals themselves, the health benefit, but also just helping to help keep seniors in their homes and fight inflation any way you can. They've done a great job of doing that.
Awesome, great. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you for signing the pledge.
Yep, we'll get that to you after the meeting.
All right, great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is our only appointment for the evening, so we'll move right into new business. Item 4.1, Morse House Request. Olga Abdallah, on behalf of the South Norwood Committee submitting a request to place a creche on the lawn of the George Morse House for the holiday season. Motion approved made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor? Chair votes a unanimous. Item 4.2, a one-day liquor permit, Norwood Art Walk. Submitting request for a one-day liquor permit for a group art exhibit and gallery hop indoors at two locations, 642 Washington Street and 45 Central Street on December 1st from 5:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve both dates.
Motion to approve both dates made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes a unanimous. Item 4.3, a one-day liquor permit, Castle Island Salvage Angel slash Salvage Angel. Submitting request for a one-day liquor permit for Salvage Angels Holiday Market at 31 Astor Avenue on December 3rd, 2023, from 12:00 p.m. until 5:00 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Ms. Grow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes a unanimous. That event is actually at Castle Island, Mr. Donnelly?
Correct.
Great, thank you. Item 4.4, cemetery deeds for signature of the board.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Mr. Sad, seconded by Ms. Grow. All those in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes a unanimous. Item 4.5, fiscal year 2024 liens, Norwood Light Water submitting a list of water sewer light and broadband liens for fiscal year 2024. We have a motion to accept.
Motion to accept and approve the liens. This is an annual business item of the board to approve placing liens on unpaid bills.
Motion to approve and accept the liens made by Ms. Grow, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor? Chair votes a unanimous. Item 4.6, public amusement device fees. Full discussion. This is something, bless you, this is something we brought up last meeting and in between meetings, we looked and saw that we had to make this slight adjustment. Mr. Plasko.
Yes, we kind of went astray with our discussion and lost fact of stipulations or caps, I guess I want to say that are imposed by both general law and bylaw. By general law, we can't charge more than $100 annually per device. And by our bylaw, we're supposed to have a separate weekday and Sunday charge. And arguing that that still can't exceed the 100, I would make a recommendation that we increase the fee to 75 for weekdays, 25 for Sundays, which would be the 100, which is still 25 less of what we actually voted the other night. We voted 125.
Thank you, Ms. Plasko, for catching that. So Mass General Law says that you've got to treat Sunday differently, right?
No, our bylaws.
That's our own bylaw. Okay. And therefore, the amount's still the same, but.
Out of the 40-year so different fees that the selectmen alone set, some are set in statute, some the statute references, our own bylaws, we have a bylaw in some cases, not in other cases. It's, this is a level of municipal modernization that we all wish would take place at some point, but they're all separate laws and they're not even in the same section of the law half the time for what this is. And over times, towns make little tweaks. So you say, okay, well, what's a car lot with 300 lots? And it's like, well, that was never actually established in statute. So it's more complex than it needs to be for a simple, simple charge.
In terms of, I don't want to use the word enforcement, but sort of regulation of this, where does that responsibility fall?
So with the selectmen, through your statutory police powers, applications for amusement devices or any other license that the selectman grant come through the selectmen. It's vetted as part of an application. If we feel it needs to be, a site needs to be visited, a site visit takes place. If there's no fee paid or somebody doesn't pay a fee, there's no license issue. So therefore, they'd be in violation of a license and then they'd get a notice of violation and we would.
And those are renewed each year?
Correct.
All right.
Rarely happens, but they don't get the license unless they've paid.
Yeah.
And the motion that I'm making is in line with the vote we took the other night as well, which is that the effective date for all existing license holders would be.
Would be the following series.
January of '25. And any new applications we get would be the current or the newer imposed fees.
Yep.
Correct.
And that's the vote we took last meeting. So is this motion to amend?
Just the, the amount for the.
Amount for the amusement license. Great.
I'll need a second.
Okay, motion to amend made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Sad. On the motion, Mr. Donnelly.
Wait, just two things real quickly. So assuming approval, can, can this be reissued to us with the, with the change amounts to us? And I just want to thank Mr. Lane for, for bringing to our attention last meeting that particular item. And it's just sort of a reminder to us that as a, as a board, you know, we can certainly use our discretion to take information out of first meeting and always subject it to a second or a vote in the following meeting. Just going forward, we should not be shy to ask that when necessary.
Great, good point. Okay, motion made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor? Chair votes a unanimous. Great. Okay, item 4.7, extended day agreement for approval of the board. Mr. Mazuka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The school committee has approved this agreement. We are looking to transfer responsibility of the extended day program from the school department over to the town via the rec department. We've had these discussions before as it relates to the warrant, but just to sort of start off fresh, if you will. For quite a few years, the rec department has never offered after-school programming because it didn't want to compete with the school's extended day programming. You'd sort of cannibalize the available participants. So we've always made it known that the rec department could run that programming if the school wanted. The school department reached out to us in the last year and said, hey, we think it might be better for the rec department to offer it. It makes sense on a lot of different levels. On the one hand, it becomes a great feeder system for the rec department. They're able to get kids into rec programs early and to hopefully feed into other rec programs. The school department has a tough enough job managing a school department. It's not really general education. It doesn't really fall into what the superintendent does. I think John Kinney, our recreation director, said it best. The rec department does really fun stuff and these programs should generally be about having fun. I mean, there's certainly an educational component. So it works for the school department, it works for us. Nothing's going to change for families and participants in the program. It's just that the administration will be shifting over to the rec department. The sites would still be at the schools. The school department made that change several years ago where they, instead of having one central site, they now do it at all the different elementary schools. There's certainly always a backlog with extended day. We'd love to address that, but it is based on the availability of sites. And it's just become a bit of a time burden for the superintendent, his team, and the school committee where they're focused on the very important work that they do. So this agreement just outlines that starting on or about January 1st, Mr. Kinney will have a more formal role in overseeing the programming at the, working with the superintendent. And then as anticipated, beginning July 1st, that will formally be a recreation program. It's run through a revolving fund, which we established at town meeting. So if we have to take in any revenues or grants that come in, we're able to. We may be looking at town meeting, if not in May, next August to, oh, sorry, next, we want to have a town meeting in August, next November, to transfer any unexpended funds from the school revolving day fund to an appropriation for the town to make sure that money stays with it. It's just a quirk of municipal law to get it to work the way it's supposed to work, as is unfortunately most of our business.
Great, thank you for the explanation. You know, we've been meeting as a group to sort of hammer out these details and there's probably still some tweaking to happen, but the school committee did vote on this.
Yes.
Great. Do we have questions for Mr. Mazuka or myself? I mean, we talked a lot about this at town meeting. Mr. Plasko?
No, we've been talking about it for a while. The agreement itself, I didn't study, if you will, but read through it and seemed to make total sense, so.
It's just sort of committing to writing what we're doing over the next few months.
Yeah, and I think too, the thing to emphasize with anyone watching at home is, the quality of the program will not change.
Staff are staying, nothing's changing. At some point, you might click on a different link to pay a bill and that will be all.
And hopefully it's easier. Mr. Sad.
One, I guess, point of information.
Yes, sir.
For the extended day, we have the seniors, they volunteer and they get off their taxes. Is that something where they can go up there and volunteer for?
Oh, yeah.
In addition, like aides or assistants?
Absolutely, we can talk to the rec department about seeing if that's something. We're always looking for a great place for seniors.
That's a good idea because I know that staffing is sometimes an issue.
Sure.
And they're not able to offer slots every day for every family. So maybe that's one way to combat that. So thank you, Mr. Sad.
Great idea.
Mr. Donnelly.
Just two things. One, just express thanks to Mr. Kinney for the presentation he did at town meeting. I thought he handled the questions very well. And just a suggestion that perhaps prior to the start date of July 1, 2024, maybe we just get a briefing from Mr. Kinney in terms of just how the, the plan to transfer the responsibilities from the schools to the rec center is going.
Absolutely, bring it back in the spring.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, good thought. Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes a unanimous. Great, thank you for your work on that, Tony, and to the school committee, Dr. Thompson.
Absolutely. The process.
Item 4.8, cemetery fees for consideration by the board. Mr. Mazuka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we're reviewing our fees, as is consistent with our financial policy, it's time we look at an increase in cemetery fees just to keep up with inflation. Cemetery fees, unlike a lot of our other fees, are a little bit more subject to staff costs for items like burials. And there's some commercial items we purchase when we're talking about purchasing liners. We're not asking the board to decide on the fee increases tonight because I wanted to know if we could have a little discussion and put some thought into where we want to go with perpetual care. So on the regular fee side, it's similar to our other fee schedules. Costs go up, we need to raise fees to maintain costs to make sure we're not, not that we make money on the cemetery, but we want to keep up with costs. We know inflation is hitting everyone, so obviously hitting the town's costs as well. Perhaps the bigger discussion, and we again don't need a resolution tonight, but is on perpetual care. Perpetual care is paid into a, it's paid as part of a cemetery purchase. It's paid into a separate fund, which is what the state law requires. That money can, all the interest from that fund can be appropriated. And actually, technically on the statute, it's this board that can decide how that is spent for the care of graves. It's not to be spent on any other project. Our perpetual care cost is significantly lower than other towns. Our overall fees are not necessarily lower than other towns. The fund has, I think, somewhere around $750,000 in it. So at least it did last time I pulled the, the account, it was a few months ago. Even at good interest rates, that's going to generate $30,000 or $40,000 a year. We're, at the current rate, never going to hit a point where we can reasonably cover a significant cost of the cemetery's operations. So it's sort of a larger discussion about what do we want to do with perpetual care? We can't do anything with the money that's in there now, other than appropriate the interest. We can simply say never appropriate the interest and let it build up for 30 or 40 or 50 years, which is fine. But candidly, I think the discussion is, what we're charging doesn't seem to make any sense. If we, the cemetery will likely never close. The reason being that the last time we did an analysis of needs, we projected we probably had 30 or 40 years left. And then there's space beyond that that would probably get us another 20 years. Our burials have been flat and we know that over time, burials are actually going down as more and more people are being cremated. Green burials and alternate disposal methods are becoming popular in some parts of the world, so that might impact it. So we'll never likely get full, per se. The idea being that if your cemetery ever filled up and you had no space, even though we have a statutory requirement to provide it, but that's a 50-year down the road issue, you know, could perpetual care cover the operating expenses of the cemetery? The answer is no. If we stopped burials tomorrow, which again, we couldn't do, we'd still roughly need the same level of staff and maintenance, just to maintain the buildings, the facilities as it is. So what do we do with perpetual care? What's the long-term picture? We could do nothing. We could dramatically increase it with the hope that maybe in 10 or 20 or 30 or 40 years, we've actually finally got enough money in there to help offset some of the costs. Maybe when burial revenue and when perpetual care revenue, or sorry, when sale of graves revenue drops significantly. There's no easy answer, there's no solution, but I wanted to bring this to the board, see what the board felt and come back with something at your next meeting, or even your January meeting, even though we want to raise the regular fees, just to see what everyone's thoughts are.
Okay.
It's really a discussion, as I said, there's no, no recommendation, no right or wrong answer.
Yeah, no, thank you for putting this together. And like Mr. Donnelly said, it's nice to have the information and to sit with it for a while and formulate questions, come back. I've been on for a few years, so we've talked about this a little bit. Mr. Plasko probably has maybe some initial thoughts, but yeah, so thank you.
Yeah, we did talk about this a lot. The Selectmen Hajar in particular was doing a lot of work and contacting other towns and getting current rates and comparing that. And then things just didn't go forward. Once again, COVID, everything else, everything slowed down and kind of got forgotten. But administration, to their credit, is bringing it back. It's something we should keep current. But it's a perfect example of the comment Mr. Donnelly made just a couple of minutes ago, that we don't have that tonight and we shouldn't because there's some things we want to consider, particularly as the manager went on about perpetual care. That's something we want to give some further thought to, really study these numbers. So personally, I'm thankful that we have it and we're getting started and reviewing this once again. But hopefully we'll take that advice and not do it this evening.
Yeah, I think we're on the same page. Ms. Grow.
I'm also in favor of taking time to digest and ruminate. Is there any tipping point though, where we really need to have a decision made by a certain point in time?
So you can separate out the perpetual care decision. We can really make a decision anytime. On the regular fees, those are generally usually just we increase a certain amount by inflation. We try to peg any fee increases to start of the calendar of the fiscal year just for sort of data integrity over time. Or can make a decision realistically anytime. The perpetual care, I'm less concerned about a shorter timeframe because that's really a policy decision. What do we want to do? The other fees, at some point in time, it's just, you know, the cost of labor for a burial has gone up. We should be raising the fee correspondingly. The perpetual care is really a policy discussion about what do we want to do? The actual fee will fall in for whatever the strategy the board chooses, but it's really a more of a decision than a typical inflationary fee increase.
Okay, great. Any other comments? Mr. Donnelly?
Just, yeah, just a couple. So yeah, I agree with that, with everything that's been said. So it's interesting that there are only several communities that do charge of perpetual fees. It would kind of be interesting to know, just, you know, what is it? Are other communities dropping perpetual fees? Are they just not, the others that don't have, have they never had them? And if they had them before and now they don't, you know, how did they kind of incorporate that into their, their assessment? Food for thought for, for, for the next time we meet. But on the, on the analysis, which is really good, it is a reference that's just, do we target, target, is the seventy-fifth percentile targeted just for a reference point, or is that something that normally?
Yeah, historically, we've thrown that out in different areas as where do we want to be? Cemeteries run a range that, you won't see overall a huge difference in range, but when it comes to perpetual care, you have some towns, we're on the lower end of perpetual care. We're two hundred dollars, Milton's twenty-five hundred. You know, we're twelve percent of the single grave fee, some towns are three hundred and seventy-five percent. So it's really the perpetual care is more, it goes all over the place. And we'll, we can dig into it more, but it's still, it seems like everyone is really just doing whatever they thought at some point would make sense. I was having a conversation with somebody earlier, if we don't really adjust the fee very much, we're never going to really get to where we are. I would speculate at some point, some towns, assuming they're not flushing their perpetual care fee, either never charge it or just figured we're never going to realistically get there charging what you can reasonably charge. But that being said, we're two, three hundred dollars, some towns are fifteen hundred or twenty-five hundred dollars. It's just, it's all over the place.
Yeah, my question has more to do with, as we go look at fees beyond perpetual, beyond cemetery, are we, do we collect, do we analyze information against the seventy-fifth percentile for recreation fees for, or is this exclusive to here?
Cemeteries are a little bit more standard. Some of the numbers are all over the place, but it's a little bit easier to call around the towns and get that number, because the sale of a grave is usually the sale of a grave. Same thing with burials, some of the numbers are a little bit more consistent, whereas recreation, what a pool charges, you're trying to compare a seven-week pool fee to a two-week pool fee, it gets a little bit more difficult.
I get it.
So historically, we've used it for cemeteries, we used to use it for some of our compensation studies. Prior to the latest system, we would sometimes target that number. And then you look at separately anything that just seems to be out, out of the ordinary, which perpetual care is in this case.
I think that number is just a reference point to kind of see where we do stand. When we were in the Sajar, again, really looking into this, the goal was to see if, how close we could get to a cemetery being self-sustaining.
Right.
And whether we should get to a hundred percent or how close we should get. And so that's part of a discussion you consider with where you want the fees to be too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Okay, anything else? Excellent, thank you, and thank you to Mr. Ryan as well.
So motion to table for that?
Yeah, motion to table, made by Ms. Plasko, seconded by Ms. Grow. All those in favor? Chair votes unanimous. Item four point nine, FM Global TIF agreement for approval of the board. Ms. Muzuko.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you are aware, this board approved a, sending a TIF agreement to town meeting. Town meeting has approved a TIF agreement, and it is now for the board to approve signing the actual document. Town meeting authorizes you to go ahead and sign and execute the document, and that is what is before you this evening. Once this is done, we send it off to the state's economic development coordinating committee.
Great. Okay, any questions from the board on this?
No, and we want to, for not suddenly have a reason to balk at it, we want to do it now, because they want to get this to the state for their December meeting.
Right, okay, great.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. The TIF agreement for FM Global made by Ms. Grow, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes unanimous. That brings us to memoranda. Pleasure of the board.
Chair vote five-one through five-three.
Special file five-one through five-three.
Second.
Made by Ms. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes unanimous. Managers update, Ms. Muzuko.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two items. One, the board's next meeting will be on December twelfth, that will likely be the only meeting in December unless something else comes up that the board will need to take up. And then just as a second item, a thanks to the rec department, police, fire, public works, and the light department, and the Noponce Valley Sunrise Rotary, the holiday extravaganza event this weekend was fantastic. This is a fairly new event in town, thousands of people were there. I think that, based on the smores count, we gave out about a thousand smores. The horse, the hay rides were all day long, nonstop. It was a great event, but I, it's been, the rec department's really pulled this together the last couple of years and it's become a staple event in the community. And kudos to them for doing it.
Great. Did you want to talk a little bit about the fire at one of the residences in?
There was a fire down in, in South Norwood at a triple-decker. Two of the families are currently being housed at a hotel in town. Internally, there's, there's some residents working and internally, there's a team working trying to continue to secure them, short-term housing and long-term housing. Particular credit, Paul Rocco and the Norwood firefighters who covered a couple of nights. We had some residents who came in, donated points and covered a couple of nights for these families. The Four Points Hotel, Schumala Gosh, who's the general manager there, they kicked in some time. The town was able to help out a little bit, so we've been able to really patch things together and make sure this family's taken care of. And kudos to the residents. I know Katie Nerrizo has led some fundraising efforts, and Officer Jeff Buguma was at the hotel the next day with the families, talking, working with them. So there's a, really a community-wide effort going on to help these folks out. I know Mr. Sad has been involved in trying to help them find permanent housing.
Right.
As well, so it's, it's a tragic situation. There were no injuries, it was a difficult situation, but there are a lot of people working to ensure a good outcome in the long run. And it's a really great example of the community really coming together and solving a problem.
Right, even the superintendent sent out messages to everyone, you know, we get their email list for having kids in school, so it really did seem like a coordinated effort. So it was really nice seeing. Mike, thank you very much too for your efforts. Anything else?
It's Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, great. Selectmen's addenda, Mr. Sad.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, the passing of Helen Patchinkowski, Ernie's mom, I want to send our condolences from the board to Ernie and his entire family. And she was ninety-nine years old and was a fixture in Norwood. And so our condolences to Ernie and his entire family. And second, we have a new business in Norwood, Little Tony's, right up the street, a little Italian eatery. They seem like they're, we've got it on Keel, and it should be a good little visit, right up at five-twenty-four Washington Street. And also, I want to, kudos to the girls' field hockey coach, Allison Dolliner, entire staff and the team. They made it to the state finals, they lost in overtime, and it was a tremendous game. It was on NCM stream. My daughter called me from Quinnipiac and they were watching it, and they thought it was, and this is the Jack Tolman and entire NCM team, they thought it was ESPN, and it was that good.
Oh, wow, that's great.
And also, Coach Manny and the football team wanted Thanksgiving, and that was tremendous coverage by the NCM. And to the team, the players, make Norwood proud. And basically, that's it. Everything else is good, and we had some winning teams and some losing teams, but all in all, it was a good, good weekend for Norwood. So congratulations and thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Sad. Ms. Grow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So from my end, what I have today is just a reminder that we're going to be having the Impact Norwood Coalition Community Forum, that's going to happen this Thursday, so November thirtieth. It'll be from seven PM to eight-thirty PM, and that's going to be in the Simone Room at the library. So what this is going to be is it's an opportunity for us to provide updates on the work that Impact Norwood is doing in the community. And it's also an opportunity for the community to come and bring feedback or concerns or ideas that they have to help with youth wellness, mitigating substance use in the community, and also for opportunities for parents to get involved. We're very excited about that, so we just want to make sure that that invitation is extended. We just love to get more feedback from the community. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Grow. Ms. Plasko.
Thank you. I think this is the first time, maybe actually the second time in twenty-seven years that I've done this, but don't miss this event, Circle Hope, December second. There are women every night on the town common. It's a great fundraiser for a great purpose. And it's also, if you ever have attended, it actually is a very inspirational evening to be down there and see all these candles lit and to walk around and see some of the messages on them. So if you have a chance, come on down, bring a few bucks, help the Circle Hope out, and we'd appreciate your attendance. That's this Saturday, December second. And I think it starts at four PM, roughly four to six PM, on the town common. One other thing, if I might, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I had a meeting with our town planner just yesterday with questions about the, where the town stood with its planning on zoning changes for the so-called three A issue, MBTA zoning. And their plan, the planning board's already working on it, and it's just in draft form, so I don't want to maybe discuss it too much since it could be changing a bit, but they're talking about coming to town meeting in March. We're already in December, or November, December's going to disappear. So I was hoping that the first meeting in January, we could have that on our agenda, maybe have them up, someone up, if not to Sarah, someone else, to really go over that and discuss it. I fear personally that if they don't make some of the changes, the town meeting would likely turn it down. We need to have this pass. I think we need to own up to the fact that this is going to happen and address it, but we also don't need to go overboard with it, which I fear the current drafts may be doing. We need some, some focus on that so that we do get this passed. It's good that they're bringing it up in March, because if, for some reason, whatever's proposed doesn't pass, we could try in the fall again, because we have to have something passed by the end of the year.
End of twenty-four, right.
December of twenty-four.
Right.
So that would give us two bites and a half, if necessary. But I don't think it's too late, especially since we're talking about a vote in March that could be accepted and passed and therefore be the final version, that we get a real good look at what it looks like, and if we want a chance to have any comments, there's not much time left, so we have to, have to get to that. So that's my request, and otherwise, I have nothing further this evening.
No, great. Thank you, I think that makes a lot of sense. We'll work to get something on the books for January, and we appreciate the work that you're doing offline on that. So thank you, Mr. Plasko. Mr. Donnelly.
So one of the downsides of being the last board member to, on the addenda, is I can cross off all the things I want to talk about. There's just a couple of things, though. Thank you, Mr. Plasko, for bringing the attention to the Circle of Hope event on, on Saturday. It was a great event. I still think there's time, if people are interested in purchasing a luminary and dedicated to an individual that they so wish. Probably a little late to send in the payment to the P.O. box, but Merck's Place is still available for stopping by and, and purchasing a luminary that will be displayed on Saturday at from four to six PM. I also wanted to make mention, as the board is aware, the, the community preservation proposal for the Morris Hill Park has been filed with the, with the Community Preservation Committee for consideration for funding for next year. We actually have a public information session planned, mostly for the neighborhood, but